Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Star Valley Ranch Regular Town Council Meeting for the month of November. It is November 11th at precisely 7:00 p.m. We do have a quorum of council members present here in the room. And we also have Councilman Bitter is on Zoom because he is out of town, but he's joining us electronically. Let the record also reflect that we have Town Administrator Aiken and Town Clerk Hurd with us as well. And at this point in time, if I could get everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Just briefly, before we get started with the agenda, as a veteran myself, I wanted to welcome and thank any veterans that are here in attendance tonight at this meeting. We do appreciate your service to the country and everything that you've done for the country. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
I move we reconvene the regular meeting.
It's been moved by Councilman Ellis. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Merrill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yes, the voice from the projector here. All right, moving on, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I move we adopt the agenda as written.
It's been moved by Councilman Ellis. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Toolson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, did we leave them? Okay, the motion passes. The agenda is adopted. All right, just one moment. All right, the first item on the agenda is announcements and proclamations. And we're gonna start out this evening, some of you know that we've been giving out a town award that we call the Ride for the Brand Award, and we've been doing that every month. And this month, the awardee is Debbie Compton, and she is here with us this evening. So Debbie, could I get you to come up so that I can embarrass you for just a little while? This is a volunteer and community service award. It's presented each month to an individual who demonstrates that community service is not just an act, but a way of life. The recipient embodies the true spirit of volunteering, showing care, responsibility, and a willingness to help others in ways that uplift our citizens and address community challenges. This month, the Town of Star Valley Ranch was proud to recognize Debbie Compton as our Ride for the Brand volunteer and community service award recipient for November and December. This year, Debbie took on the role of ranch market facilitator, organizing and running our Saturday Ranch Market events. She did an outstanding job dedicating countless hours during the week to grow the market and work with local vendors to ensure its success. Debbie and her husband Dan Compton have lived on Star Valley Ranch since 2021. They enjoy golfing, taking Harley rides through the mountains, and spending time with family and friends. Debbie's roots in the community run deep. Her parents moved to Star Valley Ranch in 1996. After the loss of her father in 2018, Debbie found healing and hope through artwork. She's a really talented artist. What began as a form of personal therapy evolved into a true passion for creating and sharing beauty with others. Her creativity and warmth shine through in everything she does. Beyond her artwork and family, Debbie has been an incredible asset to the ranch market, supporting local vendors and helping make each event a welcoming experience for all. Debbie shares that what she loved most was promoting local artists and small businesses and being part of something that brings people together. "The ranch market is more than just a place," she said. "It's a place to connect." I'm sorry, "a place to shop" was "a place to connect." The Town of Star Valley Ranch would like to express our sincere gratitude for Debbie's kindness, hard work, and dedication, her willingness to lift others up and promote community spirit, make Star Valley Ranch more positive and uplifting place to live. Thank you very much. This is copy of the newsletter, passing her to have, but also get a cool t-shirt as well. So thank you very much. If anyone, if some of you got to the ranch market this summer, but it was a pretty awesome place to visit with lots of different things every weekend. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we have an update on the Silver Star Fiber Installation Project, and we have Eric and Justin are here from Silver Star. We're gonna ask them to come up and kinda just give us an update on where they are with the project and I guess what we can expect in the future. And I guess we could've taped that up somewhere for you. That's why you're here, Justin, right? To hold up the map?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're looking here at a map. This was this year's build. So we're sitting right here right now. So we build everything north in the city. So this area has fiber and conduit. This purple area has fiber and conduit. This area just has conduit. So we'll be putting the fiber in this conduit. We started turning people up, so they have service in this purple area, and we'll start this in the spring to take service. So that's our build for this year. So then, moving on to the next year's build. So the only work that'll be done in the northern area is drops to the home. Okay, so there won't be any road. So for '26 build, we're gonna work everything south. So we have them labeled A, B, C, and D. So we'll be putting all the conduit in here, 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 and here. We'll be turning customers up here and here, and we'll turn these folks up in '27. So that's our building plan.
Where's the town hall on that?
The town hall is right here.
Okay, thank you.
So everything's south of Vista, down to Perkies. And we're even gonna do the old folks' house. They got some bad copper. So we'll be working closely with the city on start times. I know there's some road work that's gonna be done, and we'll just try to stab each other's hair as we do the build. We did plan on being done way earlier than we worked this year, but we got a little short on resources, so we went a lot longer than we planned. So is there any questions for us for the build or service or?
Any questions from the council or Eric?
So you have conduit in a certain part, like I could see the map, but on the northern section, but you haven't put the fiber in the conduit, correct?
Yeah, this blue area and the green area just has conduit.
Okay, and what's the plan to run the fiber?
We'll try to do that this spring.
Okay. So more road construction in that area?
It will be just from the, from the street to the home.
Okay, and the road will be graded 'cause it's still forest, we gotta trench there.
I drove it yesterday, and you gotta get a little work done there.
Okay.
We have embedded already cable for TVs and internet and stuff right now.
There is copper there.
Okay, can that be, you have to re-dig every trench, or is that?
So some of you do have existing conduit. I think it was about 2005, Silver Star leaded the standard to start burying a conduit with our copper cable.
Is anything older than that?
Yeah, we'll have to trench. But our crews should be contacting you before we do any work, confirming what route you want us to take, so we have minimal impact.
If you are in one of these areas, our salespeople will be contacting you mainly by email. If they don't have your email, they'll probably come over the door and knock on your door and door hangers, so that you know that you're ready to be turned on.
On the north end?
You're up in here somewhere.
Yep, and I know for a fact you're gonna do roadwork up there, because the box is on the opposite side of the street, so you're gonna have to cut across the road at some point, right?
There will be bores across the road.
Okay, so you're gonna bore under it?
But I believe the majority of it is complete.
Yeah, 'cause I know you've been Spruce and up in Flat 1 and 2, we've seen them do the cuts or boring underneath the road up there.
Yeah, we do have, like Eric said, we ran short on some resources of that stretch pretty thin with our contractors, so there will be some bores, but there should be three.
I think originally when we briefed the council, it might've been last year, I thought the plan then was to just go from south to north, but that obviously shifted around a little bit. But nice to see that, and I think when we got briefed last year, Flat 5 wasn't on there at all, so there were some folks that were asking about that, so it's nice to see that is covered too.
And our main IT guy lives in Flat 5, so he's.
There you go.
How fast is the trench?
One gig per night.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I'm the Platform 5 spokesperson, and just making sure that we're still in the fight somewhere.
Yeah.
We've been testing for two years, so just making sure that sometime we're not forgotten.
We'll be there next year.
And the question is a customer note. We don't have to do anything until you call us. You don't want us calling you saying, "When, when?"
If you have a door hanger on your door, call the number on the door hanger.
But don't call before.
Watch your email.
Yeah, yeah, we, so we have a designated kind of digital area that we'll set up, and once that's set up, that's when that contact will be made, and then it just helps us stay a little more organized to make sure that none of you guys get lost in the shuffle. So you'll wait for us to reach out first, and it just helps the organization and help it flow a lot better.
You put those maps on the wall, so we can actually pull them, look at them, and see them?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask if we were gonna be able to keep those here at town hall somewhere. So we have one downstairs from, I guess, last year, so that would be wonderful if we could retain this.
This would be the moment we can do that.
Okay.
And then we can also get you a digital copy, so if you post it on your website.
Okay. Yeah, we're also in the process of updating our master plan, so we'd love to include those. And I did get an update from your Silver Star corporate folks on the project, and I would love to include the maps in that as well, so this will be perfect.
I think there was a significant amount to, like, actually sign up with it, so I was wondering, 'cause I know a lot of grant money was given for the project, but I didn't know if any of that was a lot for our citizens trying to sign up.
It's a 350 charge for the fiber and that, but everything else is covered.
So the grant deal is not covered at all? But is that, how is that allotted? Is that by Silver Star beside that, or?
It's.
Like, can no amount go towards citizens that are trying to sign up? Because that's a pretty significant amount.
It is, the build, the complete build, is the grant portion. And so you have an engineering design fee, it's the 350.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, we've got one more. You mentioned that the tubing has been put in on houses that were built after 2005. How do you find the end has been broken off due to the weather and the snowbirds?
As far as just being cut off at the ground or?
Don't know where.
A lot of it is mapped, so in our internal mapping, it shows a blue line. So we know there's something there, so then we have to come out, find one end of it, slide a garter in it, and then follow it to the other.
Because I know a number of houses that you see the orange pipe up against the house and nothing up by the road.
Yeah, yeah, we've got some methodology, and like Eric said, we've got some records, so we'll have to indicate where it would go.
Keep you from digging up people's rights.
Any other questions?
No, we're excited to come finish up the city and give everybody service, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight, too, to give us an update.
We'll just leave this map back.
That'd be fantastic. Yeah, if you'll move it up on the table, it'd be wonderful. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a Town of Star Valley Ranch 20th Anniversary Proclamation, and Councilman Toolson has graciously volunteered to read that for us.
The Town of Star Valley Ranch Wyoming 20th Founder's Day Proclamation, November 11th, 2025. Whereas 2025, 2025 marks the 20th anniversary of the Town of Star Valley Ranch, and whereas the history of Star Valley Ranch stems back to President Abraham Lincoln's signing of the Homestead Act of 1862, enabling settlers during and following the Civil War to migrate west to take advantage of this opportunity. And whereas in 1970, the purchase of five adjoining ranches to include original homestead water rights provided the foundation for building a beloved resort community that would later evolve into our town. And whereas the success of the resort community resulted in continued growth and the need for more formalized infrastructure and governance. And whereas in the summer of 2005, a special community election was held with the majority of votes being cast by residents for incorporation of Star Valley Ranch into a new municipality. And whereas on November 8th, 2005, in the general election, citizens subsequently elected the town's first council with Boyd Sitaway as mayor and Larry Lamb, Paul Al Redlin, Kent Harker, and Jim Wheeler as councilman. And whereas, following the installation of the new council, Star Valley Ranch was officially recognized as Wyoming's 99th town. And whereas, it is fitting that we should join in the expression of our pride and appreciation for the many civic, economic, and recreational benefits our community has continued to enjoy over the past 20 years because of the growth and prosperity of our town. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council and Mayor of the Town of Star Valley Ranch Wyoming, do hereby recognize and proclaim the 20th Founder's Day to be celebrated within our community. In witness whereof, we have here unto set our hands on this 11th day of November 2025. And that will be signed by Mayor Rock.
Thank you very much for reading that. And very ones here in attendance, we do have some cake over there that we'll cut after the meeting if you want to stick around for that, so do appreciate it. Thank you for reading that. All right, moving on with the agenda, we are up to the public comment. So for the public comment portion of the meeting, if there's anyone in the, in attendance who would like to address the council, comments are limited to three minutes, and those should be focused on items that are not on the agenda. So if there is anyone that would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium and state your name and have at it. Everyone's here for the cake, right? All right. Okay, no public comments. We're gonna move on to adopt the consent agenda. And before we do that, the items on the consent agenda this evening are to approve the minutes from the October 14th work session, from the October 14th regular meeting, and the October 29th work session, dispersments, and the Lincoln County Sheriff Dispatch Report. I'm gonna ask the council if you have any questions or comments on these consent agendas? Any questions from the public about the consent agenda items? Okay, could I get? Oh, there we are. Yes, Julie?
I have joy.
Yes, please.
Julie Christensen, 291 Holly Drive. My question is about one of the agenda items, and that is the dispatch report. I was just wondering, one of the items that's listed every time is special patrols, and for the month of October, there were nine? Can somebody define that?
I'm gonna look at the town administrator and explain what a special patrol is. And this is the Lincoln County Sheriff's Dispatch Report that's in the packet.
So special patrol can be a lot of stuff. It's if an officer wants to do speed enforcement, for example, they would call that out as logging time with dispatchers. So it's just tracked differently for time. So special patrol could be anything. It could be DUI time, it could be underage drinking time, but you can just call it out as, "I'm on a special patrol." It's like a focused enforcement activity. So it's not just one activity, it could be a number of things, but, "Don't give me calls right now, because I'm busy doing this thing." Does that, did I explain that well enough?
So I guess more of my question is, is there anywhere that we know how much time the sheriff spends on the ranch? And time, I mean, how many hours in a month does the sheriff spend on the ranch? By sheriff's departments?
So there's not anything in this dispatch report that would tell us how much time they spent, but we might be able to get that. And that's why they call out special patrols, is, "I'm in special patrol, speed enforcement in Etna." If they call it out that way, we could probably get it, but I don't have that data for anyone right now.
Can the town, we can also request them to come and do special patrols, like for speeding and things like that, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we can.
Did that answer your question? Mostly, except for the time spent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you bet. Okay, could I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
We will adopt the consent agenda.
There's a motion by Councilman Toolson. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Merrill. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We have adopted the consent agenda. Moving on, the next item on the agenda are ordinances. We have one old ordinance on the third reading tonight, and we have a couple of new ones that's gone. The first ordinance is 2025-07 land usage, and I believe I, yes?
I move we adopt the ordinances by title and explanation.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinances by title and explanation for Councilman Ellis. Is there a second?
Second.
And it's been seconded by Councilman Toolson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, so we will read ordinances by title and explanation. All right, and the first one, I believe Councilman Ellis is going to.
Ordinance 2025-07, Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Zoning. This is the third and final reading. Explanation is an update to existing code to specify additional uses within the commercial zone and to provide language on conditional use permitting processes. There has been no change since the second reading. I move we adopt ordinance 2025-07.
It's been moved by Councilman Ellis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Merrill. Are there any questions from the public about this ordinance? This is the third reading, so it'll become effective 10 days after it's approved. Okay, any questions from the council? All right, there are none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved for the third reading. The next item on the agenda are new ordinances, and the first one we have up is ordinance 2025-08, which is a budget amendment. And Councilman Bitter, if you're still willing to present that one?
Sure. My motion that we adopt the budget amendments, ordinance 2025-08 appropriations for fiscal year 2025 amendment, first reading, and the explanation for this new ordinance is adding for a budget amendment, is adding $88,400 to the budget for the purchase of two snow gates that go in front of, I guess it's to be able to plow, to allow us to not create the size of burns that we are creating today in front of driveways. These gates should alleviate most of the concerns that people have about that. But that's what it's for, $88,400 that we're adding to the budget.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Bitter. I heard a motion at the beginning from Councilman Bitter to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-08. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Merrill. Any questions from the public about this? I thought there might be one. Yes, Mr. Sitaway?
I just have a question. You're increasing the expenses. Where are you getting the additional revenue from?
We have funding in the road reserve that we're gonna be using for that, and also.
Transferring road reserve over there?
Yes.
That wasn't clear in the way we put it together.
All right, good question. Thank you for asking. Any other questions from the public?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the council? All right, there are none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. First reading is approved of the budget amendment 2025-08. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-09, which is business regulations, and I asked Councilman Ellis if he would present that one.
Okay, ordinance 2025-09, Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 113, Short Term Rental of Residential Dwellings. That's the first change. Explanation, it's an update to existing code to further detail definitions and prohibitions. You'll note that residential units has been changed to residential dwellings in the title. You are also gonna see, this is the first reading, by the way, specifically, a short-term rental unit is a single-family residential dwelling or a portion of a single-family residential dwelling. In 113.03B, multiple bookings mean accepting more than one booking in the same short-term rental unit on the same dates or on overlapping dates. C is further defined as detached garages or detached accessory buildings. Specifically, short-term rentals are only permitted within the primary single-family residential dwelling and cannot occur elsewhere on the property. And those are the main changes. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 2025-09.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2025-09 from Councilman Ellis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Toolson. Questions from the public on this one? Yes, Ms. Thacker?
Have you ever considered limiting the amount of dwellings that are used for rentals?
So I'll just answer that one quickly. It is something the council has discussed, and we've also talked to the town attorney about ways in which we could go about doing that, and there's some trepidation there in terms of legal precedents and the town not being the first ones to put something forward to try and cap rentals. However, there are some other legal cases that are kind of in the same realm, and so we're, I wouldn't say we're waiting for those to play out, but there's been some positive signs that perhaps we wouldn't be the first ones to hoe that row if we want to try and put some sort of cap in place, so.
I was under the impression that Teton County had already done that, Jackson. I think that's Teton County.
Yeah, I'm honestly not sure. I know they have a lot more zoning where they only allow short-term rentals in specific zones within the town, but it's something we're actively watching and looking into, and there's still a lot of interest from our residents, especially in certain areas of town where we seem to see more of the short-term rentals than in others. So we'll keep working on it. And the council did talk about this ordinance quite a bit today, and we're already aware of a number of other changes that are probably gonna get incorporated into the second reading. And we're trying to just clarify language to make it easier in terms of enforcement, so that when we take things into our municipal court, it's a little more clear-cut on what can and can't be done, so, yes.
Some cities, I don't know which ones, have ordinance that allow, like, a lot of properties are only Airbnbs or rentals. And what they say, the ordinance that come in now, and people have thought about it in some cases, is, they said, "When you sell a house, that permit does not go with it."
Correct, yes.
And they limit so many, so if they sell it as a rental, somebody buys it a rental, they don't get that permit.
That's how our permit is, too, so.
So, sorry, Paul. Someone's gonna drive around and see all these garages that have apartments above them that will be used for someone's in the house and someone's in the garage, and it's two separate things going on.
So that's one of the reasons we went ahead and went forward with this particular update, is to try and get a little further after that. And I do have some questions for the association about that, but I can talk to you separately on that side of things. So that was one of the motivations behind trying to make these current updates.
And it would've been nice to have had a copy of that ordinance out there.
We'll make a note to add a few copies next time. Sorry about that, so.
It's probably hard to navigate, so.
Well, and it's hard probably to see, we're trying to make it as big as possible up there.
Well, it's better to not.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the public? Yes.
Just comment, sometimes you can't teleport to B and B, except for when they're rented in their six or eight cars, or three large motorhomes, two on the driveway and one over in their grass area. There ought to be something we can do to maintain the looks. Uh, there ought to be something that we can do to maintain the looks of the property on the outside as well as inside, cause that was ridiculous we had up here last year.
There are some prohibitions in the ordinance about parking and where things can be parked, so.
They, they had three, those double actual rear ending motorhomes sitting in that area, and at least a half a dozen. I took pictures of them and sent it over to her small, but I didn't see any of them. It was a weekend.
I can assure everyone that we're, we're working to improve the situation. I think we've, we've made some headway on improving enforcement and improving permitting and things like that, but there's still a ways to go, so we'll, we'll keep working on it. Any other questions on this one from the public? Any questions from the council? Okay? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, we stayed.
Okay. Thank you. The first reading carries. All right. Very good. Thank you very much, council, for those. All right, moving on with the agenda, the next item is resolutions and motions. And Councilman Merrill, would you be willing to read this resolution? No, it's okay. I'm trying to get there myself here, so. We have a resolution about streaming of meetings for the Lincoln County Commissioners, or Commission.
Resolution recommending the Lincoln County Commission implement live streaming and recording of its public meetings. Whereas the Lincoln County Commission holds its regular meetings generally on the first and third Tuesday of each month in the Commissioner Boardroom in Kimmerer, Wyoming. And whereas many residents of Lincoln County, including those residing in the northern end of the county such as the town of Star Valley Ranch, are unable to regularly attend commission meetings in person due to distance, work obligations, or other limitations. And whereas live streaming and recording of public meetings is a widely adopted method of enhancing government transparency, accountability, and public access. And whereas increased access to commission meetings will strengthen the civic engagement, allow for greater citizen participation, and provide equitable access to county governments for all residents regardless of geographic location. Now, therefore, be resolved by the governing body of the town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming. Council formally recommends the Lincoln County Commission implement , uh, live streaming of its commission meetings and make such recordings available to the public to ensure all residents of Lincoln County have the ability to observe and participate in the decision-making process of their county government. Passed and approved and adopted until 11th day of November 2025, Wyoming.
Great. Would you, um, would you like a motion to adopt it?
Oh, yeah. So I so move that we adopt this resolution. Just lost it, sorry guys.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Merrill to adopt Resolution 2511-11-005. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Councilman Ellis. Are there any questions from the public on this resolution? Okay, any kind of questions from the council? Um, and I'll just add before we take it to a vote that the towns of Thane, Afton, and Alpine have all passed similar resolutions, um, requesting that the county commission begin reporting and live streaming their meetings, so. For any of you that have ever attended, tried to attend those, if you don't go to Kimmerer, you can go to Afton to watch the live stream, but there's never, there's not a video recording available later. Yes, Mr. Sitaway?
If it takes all of the towns to do this, why they objecting to it?
My understanding is that the last commission meeting, they discussed the resolution that at the time Thane had passed, um, and the commissioners were, it didn't sound like they were opposed to it, they were more concerned about how they would be able to implement it and that it might be too difficult. That was my understanding. I was not at the meeting, but that was what I was, what was relayed to me. But I think since then, their chief of staff is actively working on it, so we'll see what comes out of it. And after the council discussed it, we just felt like we wanted to lend support to the rest of the towns. Okay, all right. No further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And we'll make sure we forward this resolution to the county commission, um, and also to the other towns as they shared theirs with us as well. All right, moving on, um, the next item on the agenda, public hearings and action items. We do not have any of those this evening, so we're gonna move on to the mayor and council portion of the agenda. And for this part of the agenda, it's basically anything else the council would like to speak on. So Councilman Merrill, do you have anything to add?
Um, I wanted to thank all our veterans again for, um, their service and to let veterans that reached out to me personally know that we are, um, or at least I am looking to hopefully move to, um, observe the 11th of November as our actual Veterans Day, so veteran core birthday.
Okay.
And then, um, also I wanted to let everybody know that we are, um, starting a, like a food drive, uh, for our blessing box. And so you'll see these posted about, they're basically, um, something that you can either donate perishables, uh, non-perishables, excuse me, or, um, you can sponsor a meal box for a family or also just donate, um, through the backbone.
Okay, Councilman Toulson, anything to ask? Uh, Councilman Ellis, anything to add?
Uh, yeah. Town has decided we're going to do a tree lighting ceremony around the town hall. That will be scheduled for December the 5th. Decorate the town hall in pine trees around it. So you're all invited?
There'll be more information forthcoming. Anything else? Uh, Councilman Bitter, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I have one last thing before we adjourn the meeting. I was trying to decide if I wanted to do this or not, cause I hope I can get through it. Um, but again, since it's Veterans Day, and I am a veteran, um, there's a poem that some of you are probably familiar with called "In Flanders Fields." And so it's, it's a very short, very poignant poem, so I just wanted to read it in honor of veterans, um, on Veterans Day. And it goes like this. "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses row on row That mark our place, and in the sky, the lark's still bravely singing fly. Scarc'd herd amid the guns below, we are the dead, short days ago. We lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe, to you from falling hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high, if ye break faith with us who die. We shall not sleep, though poppies grow, in Flanders Fields." And this was written, um, during the First World War by John McCray, who was a Canadian doctor, um, during the war. And he actually died during the war while serving in the medical hospital. He contracted pneumonia and meningitis and passed away. But it's a very famous poem, and it's often read on Veterans Day, so, sorry. Again, I was trying to decide if I was gonna do that or not, but I just would like to, wanted to. And with that, um, I would like to get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I've got some concerns, and, um, most of the people here on Stone Forest Drive have a concern.
Sir, if.
Out of order.
Yes, you're out of order, and if you had public comment, you should've made public comment earlier in the meeting. So I, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Uh, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn.
Uh, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Toulson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 7:38 PM. And if you would like to stay, we have some cake that we would like to share with everyone for Boundless.